Hello, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Maple Lake City Council Special Council Meeting. Tonight is August 5th, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Rule call. Chris Logus is here.
Scott Chantlin here.
Lynn Kissick.
Lori Hoskin.
Lane Palmer here.
Sam Ketchum, City Attorney.
Scott Hildebrand, City Administrator.
Andrew Johnson, Public Works.
All right, and we have quite a few folks in the audience. If we could keep audience chatter to a minimum during the meeting, that would be fabulous, so thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Since this is a special council meeting, we will not be making many changes, so I'll seek approval of the agenda as presented.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. As I mentioned before, we've got quite a few folks in the audience. I'm assuming a few are here for open forum. Just a reminder for those present for the open forum that matters are limited to five minutes. We won't debate any issues. May direct staff to provide additional information. Any matter that requires additional time or consideration will be tabled to a future meeting. All right, if anyone is present, please announce your name and address, and you may begin.
Do you know which one's ours? This is what happened to me yesterday. Which one is this? Welcome to Maple Lake? No caps.
Hello. My name is Joyce Swingley. My address is 333 Second Street West, Apartment 7, Maple Lake, and it's also the Maple Manor. So just a few things. To start with, the last meeting, the audio was real distorted. Yeah, and I don't know if there's something called during the meeting. I couldn't think of what to do, but anyway, just note that. And I watch these meetings at home religiously, and I have to see that Scott Hildebrand talks down to Lori and Lynn both. And he had a hissy fit when she was trying to get more information at the end of the last meeting, and this shouldn't be happening. We're better than that. And then was the $6,000 phone expense for Mr. Hildebrand so he could be reached at his other jobs? Was that approved by you folks? Okay, and then by the way, I don't know of one person that has three city administrator jobs, and that was kept under the thumbel until it came out in the papers. Now, when this massage parlor business came up and whatnot, it stated in the paper that the city administrator evaded questionings, not once, but twice. That really bothers me. That tells me something smells. And I guess that's about all for me, but that's enough then, too.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, Council and members. My name is Sean Tatro. I'm the owner of Kind Bud Inc., a licensed cannabis cultivation company, seeking a conditional use permit for the building 710 Sixth Street Northwest. Oh, sorry, my address is 1280 Bishop Circle, Watertown, Minnesota. I was just coming to introduce myself, and I will be around for the entirety of the meeting if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns for me after. Thank you.
Can you just state the address of the?
Building?
Uh, 710 Sixth Street Northwest, Suite 100.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council of Deb Guyen 400 Oak Avenue South. Few things here. I know you've heard the word Doge a lot lately, and when I watch meetings, I see what's being spent. I believe some of it's pretty frivolously unnecessary. You know, I think maybe the city of Maple Lake should look into Department of Doge. Here's why. As Joyce alluded to, we paid $6,000 for a phone system so Mr. Hildebrand could be more readily to us at his part-time jobs. Excuse me? Why is our, why is our city taxes paying for that? He should be here full-time, what he does after the 40 hours a week or whatever. So I guess I don't understand why our taxpayer should be paying for that phone system so we can reach him and his two other part-time jobs as city administrator. He's making $100,000 a year or over. That's on the agenda tonight to currently ask for a raise. Boy, I'd like a part-time job, $100,000 or more a year, work for two other cities. Some of this is way out of hand, people. We, so along with the full-time city administrator at City Hall, we have a full-time financial planner, full-time administrative assistant, one part-time administrative assistant, another part-time person, and we have a part-time person as needed. That equals three full-time, three part-time. For a town of 2100 people, we used to get by with three full-time, one part-time, and that was not with a city administrator. So my question to you is, when you set out to look for this city administrator, as we did, Chris and I, when we were in the council back in, when we looked for our first one in 2019, 2020, we told that headhunter company what we were looking for, what we wanted in that city administrator to suffice our city the best. And that's how she booked it. I don't know what you guys did here, but when you have a city administrator, and oh, let me add, not only are them all the positions, we also have Abdo Financial hired, Civic. We have a company that comes in to do payroll. We also have another agency doing mailings, just for bills, for our little town of 2100 people. Come on, council. You've got to start scraping back here. Lynn, you know what it was like when we had Linda and we had three and one, one part-time. We got along just fine. And now all of a sudden, Maple Lake must be 50,000 people with all these other things that we need, financial planners. Abdo, let me remind you, when we hired them back in '22, that was just to get our books straightened, six months behind. One-time deal that was supposed to be. One-time deal, so we could get our books straightened out, to get our audit done, or we were potentially going to lose $250,000 of local government aid. Made sense to hire the $50,000 people, but they're still here three years later. Doesn't make sense at all. I could go on and on. I think the way the economy's gone, the federal government cuts, you people, when you go to do your budget, you better tighten up here. There's already schools going to go ask for levies because of the federal funds they're not going to get. And all that's going to trickle down to us tax-paying citizens in the city, township, school, county. So you better figure out how you can operate different. You're going to tax people right out of here. Also, on Al's or Joyce's note, I just, council, you have to remember, or the staff here, you people are working for us. We are not working for you. And the disrespect I see up here at some of these meetings, uncalled for, uncalled for. It is sad. Sad to turn on a meeting and see what's going on. You should have respect for our council members. Lori, thank you for trying to be transparent. You were elected to come here and do a job by your constituents of Maple Lake, and that's what you are doing, and she should not be questioned.
You're at five.
I'm at four and a half, Lynn. I'm sorry. I've got the clock going here. And then I'm just going to let it go. But I see Andrew's already taken over. Al must be officially done. Nope, he's not. Well, anyway, Al, thank you for all your years of service to the city in case I don't get back whenever your last day is, but Al was a very dedicated employee, put a lot of heart into Maple Lake, born and raised here, took a lot of pride. So thank you all here for all your time. You're welcome, Andrew, to the, to the big seat there, and I know you'll do a good job, too. Thank you. There.
Anybody else wish to speak?
I just had a note that the live stream isn't working. If we can get a note back.
Are you double-checking on that?
Did he hear you?
Is he okay in there?
I'm here.
Okay.
It says it's going for me. Everything's good.
Thank you.
Hi.
Please go ahead.
He just asked us to hold.
He's working through some technical issues. It'll be recorded, so the playback will still be valid, so go ahead.
Hi, my name is Deborah Bollinger. I live at 463 Ash Avenue South, Maple Lake. I've been here in the city for about 20 years, and we live right near the ballpark there. And we have a lot of traffic going in and out of there, of course, on nearly every weekday and sometimes on the weekends. And I feel like city employees are driving through very fast. People that, that attend the ballpark are driving very fast. I think maybe you guys would consider putting some 10 mile per hour signs at both entrances or something. This has been going on for years, and it seems to be getting worse with people driving ATVs in and out, golf carts going fast, and the city guys and the little trucks going fast. I mean, it's kicking up a lot of dust, and we live right near the corner there. And it's getting a little unbearable where I can't open my windows and stuff, you know? I don't know how often they do the dust control. But I just think a lot of people, if you saw that, if you monitored that, they're going way too fast in there. And there's police officers going in and out, and I understand when they get a call, they got to fly out, but that's like a cloud of dust over there, you know? And also, about a month ago, or maybe longer, maybe a little over a month, different counties were training dogs in the small ballpark, right out in the open. And I think one was from Dakota County, and I think Wright County was there. They were training police dogs back there where children play, and people walk their dogs on a daily basis. And my friends, one of the neighbor's dogs ran out there, "Ooh, dog! You know, hello!" And they're running out there to these police dogs. I thought the dog was going to eat, you know, the neighbor's dog. So I thought that was kind of careless. Why are they out there in the open in a kid's ballpark? Why, you know, can't they do this at the, the building over there, you know, the, you know what I'm talking about? The county building or something. They have plenty of acreage over there. Why in a little ballpark, you know, where kids play and stuff? I thought that was kind of weird. And then concerning the, the city administrator, I heard that in Hudson, Wisconsin, which is probably triple the population of Maple Lake, their person retired or resigned because they were working part-time, and the city wanted them to work full-time, and they said, "No, we're in there enough." And, you know, they, they weren't giving it their all, and they made well over $100,000 also, and they resigned because they were going to get fired because they didn't want to come into the office. And I feel like if somebody takes a big job like that, and it's important to, that we balance the books here, people like to know where their money's going. And if you're paying somebody this much, then why are we raising our, why are you guys raising our taxes? You know, this is a little town. We shouldn't have to be raising taxes, raising all this money from the liquor stores, the bars, the revenue, the parades, and all the little things that we have going on out here in Maple Lake, the St. Patty's Day thing. I mean, we raise so much money out here. Why are we raising taxes for this little town of 2,160? And I agree that the phone system is not needed at that price. Money should be used for something else. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing nobody stepping up, we will move on then to the consent agenda.
Are you going to recap that? I wanted you doing that. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
It's new, so that's all.
Yes, thank you. So we had talked previously about at least recapping the comments made, so thank you for the reminder. So Ms. Swingley spoke about the audio distorted at our last meeting, some concerns regarding Mr. Hildebrand, also the phone expense, also the massage parlor concerns. And Sean spoke about the cannabis business he is intending to start and seeking approval for eventually, and asked if we could speak to him afterwards. Deb, Ms. Guyen spoke about frivolous spend, also spoke about the new phone system, part-time jobs, the number of staff that we have in the city, also the concerns about the other contracts that we currently have with other systems, and the schools asking for levies that we shouldn't be raising our taxes. And Ms. Bollinger spoke about traffic by the ballpark, asking for slower signs or dust control, dog training at the ballpark, and also regarding our administrator, referencing a, another city administrator in Wisconsin who resigned because didn't want to work part-time, concerned about taxes, didn't want to work, sorry, full-time, concerned about taxes being raised, and mentioned the phone system as well. All right, thank you for that reminder. Okay, now moving to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes, our special city council meeting of July 21st. Also approving an application for an exempt permit for St. Tim's Church, bingo, on November 16th. Approval of a temporary liquor license for St. Tim's Fall Festival September 28th. Approval of an application for an exempt permit for NWTF, Big Woods Boss Gobblers Chapter. That's for their raffle on January 3rd at the Legion. Approval of an application for an exempt permit for Heart of the Lakes Ducks Unlimited, Chapter 286, raffle on September 23rd at the V.
I had sent an email earlier this last week to Scott regarding the minutes, and I didn't see a corrected minutes in regards to some of the specifics. Scott, are you going to, I'd like to remove it because some of it's not specific. And my name was referenced in it, so I want it to be specific to what was told to me. So, and I did send him a heads-up on that, and I didn't see a corrected version of it.
I haven't had a chance to listen to the tape. We can always remove it and pass it to the next agenda.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure because I sent you the email, and I never got any response back.
Okay.
So if we can remove it to the next agenda.
Removing item A, then seeking a approval for the rest of the items.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus topic A for approval of minutes of July 21st.
I'll second that. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that brings us now to the presentation and discussion regarding our financial audit.
I don't know, I can't get into any of that. This happened to me yesterday, the exact same thing.
Good evening. My name's Justin McGraw. I'm a CBS Cities Auditor, and I'm here tonight to present to you the City's December 31st, 2024 Audit Report. And you got a few different products from me when I showed up this evening. What's on the screen and what you have at the, the bound document you have that doesn't have a cover is the presentation I'm going to follow tonight. All the information in that presentation is derived from your financial audit statements themselves, as well as your management letter, a letter from us as auditors to you at the governance level to let you know how that audit went. So as I'm going through this, if you have any questions, feel free to stop and ask me. But if you're looking for more detail, where some of these numbers are coming from, or what the, the information is, is derived from, those documents are a great place to start. So I'll start, pages one, pages two. We'll start with page one. So at the beginning of our presentation here, our independent auditors report. In that opinion that we issue, there's a handful of information in there. It describes what the intent of our audit is, to determine if your financial statements are free from material misstatement, the standards we use to come to that conclusion, as well as the responsibilities of both parties, us as your auditor and you as the city. On page two, in big, bold letters at the top, you'll see that the financial statements are presented fairly, in our opinion. We, we do believe that they can be relied upon for gauge performance of the city, as well as future decision-making purposes. So if you don't take anything else away from my presentation, please remember that one. And then on page three, we jump into the numbers. So this is the statement of net position. We look at it at two points in time, December 31st, 2024, December 31st, 2023. So you can see where some of the changes happened between the two years. And this is, this encovers, this covers all operations, all funds, all activities of the city, all rolled up at, at one point in time. So starting at the top with your current and other assets, these will be your cash balances. These will be accounts receivable balances, amounts owed to the city from other governmental entities. And you'll see here, it stayed pretty steady between the years. You know, you did have a decrease in your cash balances a little bit, but you did have an increase in amounts owed to you from other governments, primarily the state of Minnesota. So you see that kind of making up that difference between the decrease in your cash and the increase in that receivable. Right below it, your capital assets, these will be buildings, equipment, infrastructure, those types of items. And you did have a decrease in those capital assets in '24 compared to '23. A lot of that is due to the depreciation or the wear and tear of your current outstanding assets, outpacing any current eruditions. And there were some disposals in there as well in 2024. Right below that, in that pension asset, this is related to the fire department or the fire relief. They did have an increase in their net pension asset, largely due to the performance of their investments in '24 compared to what they had in 2023. On the bottom half, liabilities, current and other liabilities, think your routine bills, salaries, wages payable, accounts payable, unearned revenue, those types of items. You did have an increase in your current liabilities, largely due to accounts payable amounts related to property cleanup, as well as engineering. So engineering, those services were formed prior year-end, paid after year-end. And then right below that, your long-term liabilities, which are consists, consist of your debt balances primarily. So bonds, notes, those types of things. You know, you didn't issue any new debt in 2024. You made your scheduled debt service payments in '24, so the expectation was those balances would decrease, and we saw that here throughout the audit. Then at the very bottom, the net position. So if you could pay off all your debts and sell all your assets of the city, this is what you would have left over. And you can see here, you had an increase in the overall net position of the city between the years. A lot of that is due to your net investment in capital assets or increase in those capital asset balances, less any debt owed against them. But we've seen that trend over the past several years. We saw it again here in 2024. And again, this is all, all funds, all activities, all operations rolled up into one slide. On page four, we look at the individual funds, starting with the general fund. General fund's the main operating fund of the city.
Justin, can I just ask you one question?
Yes.
On the back page, the unrestricted dollar amount, what, what did you say the unrestricted was?
Yeah, so you got three classifications of your net position. That net investment in capital assets is your capital asset balances, less any debt owed against them.
Right.
That restricted net position is, is funds you have on hand that can only be spent for a specific purpose. Think
Okay.
Your debt levy, right? So you levy for debt payments, that cash, excuse me, comes in, it can only be spent to make your debt payments. The unrestricted is kind of what's left over.
Your slush fund.
I wouldn't call it a slush fund.
But I mean.
It's at your discretion to spend how you see fit.
Right, but in layman's terms.
Yes, yes. There's no, there's no commitments, there's no assignments attached to that unrestricted net position, so you can spend it however you deem appropriate.
So, so would this come under the miscellaneous categories that I've seen throughout the budget?
So I guess it depends when you're looking at individual funds. Like if you have miscellaneous budget items and like a debt service fund, those are primarily restricted items. The EDA fund, revolving loan fund, yeah, those have restrictions
Right.
Attached to those items. But outside of that, it's largely in that unrestricted column
Okay, so that makes sense.
Or role, excuse me.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
You're welcome. So the general fund, looking at your cash investment balances. So we look at this at a trend over five years to see where those have been. You did see a decrease in the general fund cash balances in 2024. And the general fund has been used in the past as, for inter-fund borrowing. So if another fund does not have the cash on hand to pay for expenses, the general fund has typically been the one to foot that bill until they have the cash available to repay the general fund. And in '24, you saw some of that again, particularly with the airport fund and the taxi lane project. You know, it has a, it has a very large receivable sitting there from the state of Minnesota, but at the end of the year, you had paid for those construction costs, and the state had not reimbursed you yet. So the general fund is, is, I guess, floating that cash to the airport fund until that, that receipt comes in. And then looking at the activity of the general fund on page five, again, we got a five-year trend of where that has been. You know, in 2024, you saw expenditures exceeding the revenues of the fund. You did have increases in your expenditures that I'm going to touch on in a couple slides here. But looking at your overall fund balance in that fund, one metric we like to use as auditors is that unassigned fund balance within the general fund, how many months' worth of expenditures is sitting in that, that general, or that fund balance? You know, so if revenues dried up, you didn't get another dollar in, in revenue in the general fund, how long could it keep providing services at its current rate? And you're at sitting about seven months, which is a really good ratio for a general fund. The state auditor recommends five. We usually recommend six because you kind of touched on, others touched on LGA earlier, so LGA, property taxes, they usually come into the city about six months apart. So if you have at least six months of quote-unquote reserve sitting in that general fund, you should be able to weather any delays and remittances from the state or the county for those big revenue items for the general fund. And speaking of the revenues, on page six, we look at the revenues, and we look at this by source. So where does the general fund get its revenue that it's spending on, its expenditures? And you had some changes in 2024. The largest decrease you had was the property taxes. So your property taxes went down, and that was reflected in your levy. So it wasn't a big surprise to see those go down because you didn't levy for the amount you had levied for in 2023. Intergovernmental revenue remains pretty high with the change in the LGA formula, the local government aid formula. A lot of cities did see an increase. Smaller cities saw an increase in the amount they received from the state. And then charge for services also did increase in '24, primarily due to garbage collection, building plan checks. So you saw some of those items reflected in your charge for service revenues within the general fund. And then on page seven, the expenditures of the general fund. So all those revenues that we just talked about that are coming into the general fund, what are they being spent on? We look at this by departments. So which department has the greater proportion of those expenses of the general fund? Typically, general government, public safety, public works have been the areas with the lion's share of expenditure of the general fund. There's no change in 2024. Some of the reasons you're seeing increases in some of those departments, the general government, you had higher professional fees related to, you had an interim administrator, you had an administrator search firm, you had code enforcement, all rolled up in that general government category. Public works, that increase was related to seal coding and engineering related to those projects. And that public safety increase is largely tied to your sheriff's contract. So you saw increases So you saw increases in those three areas as well. One thing that can sway the general fund pretty dramatically from you to here is capital outlay. So if you have large capital needs that the general fund is paying for, that can have a big impact on that change in fund balance that we talked about a few slides ago.
Because it darn near doubled.
Expenses of the general fund or the general government? Yeah, you saw some pretty hefty increases in '24.
We have had a lot of expenditures.
So then on page eight, moving away from the general fund to some of the other funds of the city, special revenue funds. These funds are typically set up to serve a specific purpose within the city, and the hope is that the revenues brought in from those services can sustain the fund. And you have quite a few of them, so I'm not going to touch on them all, but just some of the bigger changes that we saw in 2024. Your fire fund, that increased, it increased interest income. And one thing that we know from throughout the audit is there had been budgeted higher capital outlay than actually the fire department spent in '24. So they kind of built that reserve sitting in that fund balance. Your ambulance fund, so if you remember probably last fall, the state gave the ambulance aid to all the cities that had ambulance services. So you had $87,000 come into the ambulance fund for that purpose. And your expenditures were down in the fund as well compared to what you had budgeted. Again, capital outlay, less capital expenditures than was planned. The community development fund, you had an increase, the contributions made to that fund from the Lions Club for park improvements. So you saw an increase there. And then on page nine, your other special revenue funds. Not a lot of activity in these ones, your TIF districts, your active TIF, active, excuse me, TIF districts. You have a slight increase in that fund balance as TIF revenues come in, the reimbursements are made to the developer. And typically, TIF districts start out their life as having a deficit fund balance because there's costs incurred to get those up and running. And then as the TIF revenues come in, it slowly pays them back. So this is another one that's borrowing money from the general fund. And as TIF revenues come in, it's making those payments back to the general fund. On page 10, capital project funds. So capital project funds are set up to capture all the costs related to large capital projects, usually road or utility projects. And you've had a few of them over the years. And some of the changes we saw, you know, 2021 street improvement project, that fund, that project was completed, that fund was closed out. And the remaining funds were transferred out to other funds of the city to cover debt service requirements and project costs or other project costs, excuse me. That 2023 street improvement project saw the most activity in '24 compared to the rest of your capital project funds with construction ongoing and projects being completed in 2024. And then municipal improvement project fund saw a decrease related improvements at the beach. So you saw some pretty healthy construction activity going on around the city in 2024.
I'm missing a page. I'm like, I'm on the water fund. I'm like, wait, this doesn't match.
Not in there at all?
No. No.
So then page 10.
Oh, it's interesting. Her page 10 is water fund. And it's different than ours. Do you have another copy by chance?
I think we have an extra one over here. Hopefully that one there. I don't know. Must have bound.
It's called the luck of Lori.
Maybe we need to audit. Your printing department.
I thought maybe I had fat fingers and didn't turn it correctly, but there it is. Okay. I got it now. No worries.
Okay. Well, so we mentioned the water fund. We'll move on to the water fund. So shifting away from the governmental funds of the city to the proprietary funds, the utility funds. So the water fund, so cash balances, you saw a pretty healthy increase in cash balances in 2024. And if you had a chance to look at your cash flow statement and your financial statements, a lot of that is driven by cash provided by operations and the tax revenues that go into that fund. So between those two items, it's covering the capital costs of that fund, the debt service costs of that fund, and an overall increase in that net position. Looking at the activity of the water fund on page 12, you see there is a pretty healthy increase in that net position. You know, your revenues from '23 going into '24 saw some increases. I mentioned the taxes, interest revenue are items that's nearly across the city. You saw increasing that investment income almost crossed all your funds. But you know, your expenses did go down in '24. You know, you had less water meters replaced, repairs, personnel costs, all decreased in '24 compared to '23. And then on page 13, so we do a calculation here where we look at the operation, trying to get to the operations of the water fund and its ability to pay its debt just from operations. So the margin you have there in '24 is a pretty healthy margin for that water fund. Those decrease in those expenses really helped out quite a bit. So it looks like, you know, in 2024, you've got eight years left on the longest debt within that water fund. It's maintaining the margin to make those debt payments going forward. Then on page 14, the sewer fund. Again, looking at the cash investment balances, an increase here as well. This increase, you know, looking at the cash flow statement, it's not cash provided by operations. This is that tax levy into that sewer fund that's increasing that cash. So you'll see that if you get a chance to look at your cash flow statement. So it's kind of telling us as auditors, maybe your sewer rates aren't quite at that level to cover operations. So that tax levy is supplementing those costs.
Can I ask you something? So when I look at this amount here, is that an indication that our costs are covering that? Because there was some issues, and I don't know if this is the time or the place, but we had talked about there was a certain percentage that was supposed to automatically go to the sewer fund and then hadn't been allocated properly. Scott had brought that up, and so it was being corrected? So my question is, do you feel we're at the right point for the sewer coverage? Or you can't make that statement?
You speak from the tax levy, is that correct?
So that is a storm sewer.
Storm sewer.
But also we're doing a rate study with Northland Investments to see if that, if our rates needed justice, that it covers.
This sewer fund goes wastewater.
Okay, so it's not the rain. Okay.
Sanitary sewer, not stormwater.
Thank you.
We do have a slide on that, so hold that question.
I was just going to say, there's a slide. There's more. Maybe this is the other book. So, okay, thank you.
Yes. So then, yeah, you look at the activity of the sewer fund. So you did have a decrease in that net position in 2024. And you know, your sewer fund is kind of unique, and it's part of the wastewater commission. So how, kind of how they go is how you go. And they have had a decrease in their net position over the years, and that really impacts your sewer fund. Because that change that they see, a third of it gets reflected in your financial statements as well. So I think it was about $51,000 their net position decreased, or your share of their net position decrease was in 2024. And you got a $42,000 decrease in net position here. So it kind of, they seem to follow each other depending on the wastewater commission does, how your sewer fund does. And then again, the sewer fund's debt on page 16. So we take out that depreciation, some of those non-cash items, and look at the sewer fund's ability to pay its debt just with cash brought in from operations. And you're seeing here in 2024, it is bringing, it's maintaining a margin to service the debt of that fund. Storm sewer, here we go. Page 17. So storm sewer, this is kind of the first year that fund's been up and active. So we only have one year's worth of data on all the slides. But it does have cash in that fund at the end of the year. And I touched on that 2021 street improvement project. So it had cash left over from the construction of that project. And there was a fairly large storm sewer project in 2024. So that money was used to help pay for some of those improvements. And there's some cash left over in that fund to fund any other future project costs or repair costs that may come up. And then the activity on page 18, you can see there relatively minor expenses in that fund because a lot of it was capitalized as a capital asset. But the, no revenues in that fund, it just really transfers into that fund in 2024 to get that, kind of like seed money, to get that fund up and running. And that's common, you know, a lot of our clients are establishing a storm sewer fund because it is becoming such a large part of like the general fund's public works budget. So they're looking at ways to bring in revenues, to support that system, to improve that system so that people don't have water in their basements, the streets aren't flooded, and things like that. Then the liquor fund on page 19. So cash investment balances, it's steadily been increasing over the years. There's no change in 2024, and that increase in cash is driven by sales at that store. And looking at, with liquor funds, there's different metrics people use to determine how much cash is appropriate to maintain on hand at a liquor store. You're currently sitting at about five months' worth of operating expenses and inventory purchases, purchases, excuse me, in that cash balance. Three to six is kind of an area we see a lot of people sit at. And then, you know, anything above that gets transferred out to other areas of the city to support those activities or those operations. And then on page 20, the activity of the sewer fund.
Liquor?
Yeah, liquor fund.
I thought maybe I had the wrong one again.
No, it ends up in the sewer.
Speaking with the liquor fund. So you can see, it's been pretty consistent over the years. One thing that does impact that is appreciation at the store as well as pension-related balances. So the more personnel you have over there, the higher portion of its, your pension liability gets assigned to the liquor fund. And you're seeing that kind of eat in a little bit to that change in net position. Now, those are largely non-cash items. So one thing we like to look at is gross profit percentage. Are they maintaining that margin? Usually for off sale, it's, you know, anywhere from 20% to 30%, maybe 35%, depending on if there's sales and whatnot to move stuff off the shelves. But you're kind of maintaining that prop margin, which we see at a lot of our other municipally owned liquor stores. And that's tough to do, you know, your prices change so quickly from your vendors. You got to make sure those are reflected in your prices as well. Then the airport fund, so the airport fund has no cash as of '24. It hasn't had cash for the past few years. And that's just due to the revenues brought in to the airport fund. It just can't support the cost of maintaining the airport. So again, if you look at your cash flow statement, you'll see where that cash is being used. So because it doesn't have cash on hand, the general fund is supporting the airport fund by borrowing that money from the general fund to the airport fund at the end of 2024.
So where did we spend that $12?
That's a really great question.
I was wondering that too. 12 bucks.
I'm going to ask our airport manager.
We got one light bulb.
There we go.
Those airport ones are not cheap.
And then the activity of the airport fund on page 22 here. You can see here, did have a relatively healthy change in the position. A lot of that is driven, actually all of it's driven from revenues from the state. So they're giving you contributions to maintain the airport in that taxi lane project. So that's what's driving up that increase in fund balance. Which really is just, it's not a spendable fund balance, or it's not in spendable form. It's just a new improved taxi lane.
It's really skewed because it makes it look like it's way different than it truly is. I mean, when you, when you look at the revenue component, because like you said, it's really all state money. There's really no true revenue generated by the business aspect of the airport directly related to the airport.
That's right. One time, well, suddenly one time.
Except for the $12 back in 2020.
Yeah, except for the 12 bucks you must have got from somebody presenting the hangar or something.
I was going to say, hangar rent and fuel sales are income at the.
Yeah, but it doesn't off, yeah. I was just kidding, yeah.
Yeah. And that's the thing with, you know, these proprietary funds versus those governmental funds we talked about earlier, is, you know, when you spend a, when you make a capital investment or an improvement in those governmental funds, it shows up as an expense. And the airport fund, proprietary funds, it shows up as an increase in your assets and those capital assets that we talked on when I started my presentation. So it does look like, wow, the airport fund had a great year. And it probably did from the shape of the taxi lane, how it looks. But really, it's not cash flowing still here in 2024. Okay, so that was all the numbers I was going to cover tonight. And in addition to auditing the balances of the city, we look at compliance in a few different areas. So starting with the state of Minnesota and state statutes. We look at things like conflicts of interest, contracts and bidding, depository of public funds. And we looked at those throughout our audit, and we're happy to report we came across no issues of non-compliance. So what that tells us, auditors, is that your team here is making sure that those, they know what those laws are, and they're making sure they're being followed. So hats off to everybody for staying on top of that because there's a lot of them. The other item we look at is internal control, or how financial information flows through the city. From maybe the time a bill will show up in the mail to the time a check goes out in the mail. And we have a few weaknesses we've noted, and if you sat through my presentation before, you probably heard me talk about them. One of them being the audited financial statements. So the product you have in front of you, while it is derived from your financial records, we do put it in that format with the required disclosures for the Government Accounting Standards Board. So we have to disclose that to you. Limited segregation duties. This is another one with smaller office staff. It can be difficult to break up every part of that financial recording process from who has custody of the assets, who does the record-keeping of the assets, and who has the authority to release those assets. So what you'll have happen at cities with smaller office staff will be one person gets asked to do maybe two or three parts of that, of that process. So, and you ask no different here. So I like to use it as an opportunity to talk to you at the governance level, to let you know, hey, you have another set of eyes in that process. So when you get your council packet, or you're looking at a claims listing, or financial information, if you see things that look unusual, unfamiliar vendors, things like that, ask those questions of your team here and get the answers.
Always. Yeah, always.
There we go. And then material audit adjustments. So this is one that, you know, here we are in August, and I'm reporting on your 2024 balances, year-end balances. So we've adjusted them quite a bit from what you probably saw in your January council meeting for the year-end balances. There's been a lot of adjustments for your accruals, payroll, capital assets, all those things. We've made quite a few adjustments, including closing funds and correcting some of the deficit cash balances. So it's really just to let you know that if you look at my audit report or our audit report and you compare it to what you had for year-end balances shortly after the year ended, you'll see some differences because we made those adjustments. Okay, and then in addition to the thicker bond document, which is your audited financial statements, we also issue a management letter. And really, this is a letter from us as auditors to the governance level, letting you know how the audit went, any change in your accounting practices, or difficulties encountered, or disagreements we may have had, we're happy to report none on all accounts. And you know, it's not, we don't just ask a lot of your team here inside City Hall. We ask a lot of your vendors, your engineers, the banks, the county, the state. Everybody was very helpful in giving us the information we requested so we could be here tonight and deliver the audit report. So thank you to everybody for their help. And then throughout the audit, if we come across things that we feel could benefit the city, we like to make recommendations. And we have a few of them here that we want to touch on, journal entry approval. So this is a good practice to have in place for adjusting the city's account balances, specifically the person who's making the journal entry, it's not the person who approves the journal entry. So you get a second set of eyes on that and make sure that they're reasonable and appropriate in the correct amounts. So that's one process we would recommend. So if, who's the new finance person? No, I can't.
Margaret.
Margaret. So if Margaret makes, prepares the journal entry, Scott's approving the journal entry, or vice versa. Inadequate debt levy. So this is one just to put on your radar. The 2019 A debt was originally supposed to be paid with, partially be paid with TIF revenues. Those TIF revenues never came to fruition, so that fund became, came into a deficit fund balance. So to make up for that TIF revenues, that debt levy needs to be increased so you don't, so you have the cash on hand to make those debt payments. At the end of '24, you're on the right, in the right trajectory for that. You have a positive fund balance, excuse me, in that fund. And state statute recommends, or not recommends, requires 105% of the next year's principal and interest payments be levied for to account for people possibly not paying. You still have only 100% of that principal and interest payment available to make that, those next payments. So, yeah, so it's on the upswing, maintain those debt levies as you're going through your budget. You're setting your levy. The debt documents have all that information right in there. You can pull that number right out of there and apply it to your levy. And then timely bank reconciliation. So, you know, bank reconciliations are a great tool to catch any errors or mistakes or omissions in your, in your accounting records. Basically, you compare what the bank has as your bank balance or your cash balance and what you have, and any reconciling items that are between the two, such as outstanding checks or deposits in transit. So the quicker you can do that after month end, the easier it'll be to capture any mistakes, fix any mistakes, or any errors in that process. So I know it's been an ongoing thing here, trying to get current, and that's the tough part when you fall behind. It is so difficult to get current, but you're making progress. We are seeing that. Obviously, I'm here in August versus October this year, so progress is.
Two months ahead.
But keep working on it. Just because '24's audit's done, don't let it fall back on the priority list, and you'll find yourself in that same position next year as you try to reconcile 2025. So then the last page is my contact information. So if you're looking for, if you're looking through this stuff in your free time and you come across more questions, or you think I should have asked Justin this or I wish I would have asked him that, feel free to call, email, or if you're in the Litchfield area, stop by our office. So with that, open up to any questions, anybody have. So with that, open up to any questions anybody has right now.
First of all, I want to just say thank you. Thank you to you and your team for the work that you put in and make a note that we were actually ready on time except for the ambulance billing piece. So I just want to make that call out that both your team and our team worked their tails off to meet that on time deadline, which is an amazing turnaround from where we were last year. So just kudos to everybody for all of that. And in mentioning the airport, or not airport, sorry, the ambulance billing starts with an A.
Yes.
Mentioning the ambulance billing, I didn't see that mentioned or reflected here. I know because of the situation, it's outstanding or did that get reconciled?
Something in here with.
Yeah, so the ambulance billing, so is everybody familiar with the billing vendor? Okay. So yeah, and they're, I believe they are out of business now.
Yeah.
They're not responding. I have other clients that use the same vendor, they're not responding to emails, attorneys are involved. So to, and I'll go into a little depth about the ambulance billing piece itself is you know, you do these runs, you have these calls and the information gets sent to the billing vendor and they create a list for us of here's every call that we've billed out and that the ambulance has run. So we take that balance. Historically with ambulance services, everything you bill, you do not collect. And the longer it goes uncollected, the less chance you have of collecting it. So what we did is we took that historical data, so we got the balances as of 1231 24. And we use what, we didn't have the collections after year end on those balances, but we made an estimate. If you have a chance to look at that management letter that we gave, it's a sensitive estimate, we call it. Whereas we, we're not 100% sure out of that amount that's still outstanding, how much you're going to collect is going to be converted to cash. So we make an estimate and I can't remember off the top of my head what the percentage was, but there's a percentage, do you remember Scott? I don't remember. It's based on, it's based on aging, yeah. And I can get it to you if you're curious about the calculation. But basically we discount those receivable balances based on how long it's been outstanding. So if it's over six months, if it's over, if it's three to five months, well we'd say only a portion of that is actually going to be recognized by the city when it comes in as cash. So that's one item that is in our financial statements that we're just not 100% certain on what that balance is going to be as those collections start coming in in future, hopefully this year, but maybe future years. So yeah, that's how we, that's how we resolved the ambulance receivable issue that was, that was holding us up once we came up for field work and after we left.
Okay. Appreciate that explanation. I knew there were a couple of options for dealing with that and I was just curious where that landed and how that left us.
Your new billing vendor helped out a little bit with that as well. So yeah, we want to thank them for giving us the historical information they had to help us resolve that problem. Midwest DMT, right? I think so.
Sure.
I think so.
I had one other question too, if you're done.
Yes.
My question was, you made reference to the fact that, you know, how things were adjusted for your audit versus where we're at. One of the things that I found kind of interesting or frustrating was at the end of the audit last year, there was issues with the inability to keep the reconciliation of the bank accounts up to date. And so like the audit ending and the actual reconcilable accounts here did not match. And so we were again going down that same rabbit hole. I know you've, you've been here for both of them and you've seen things improve quite a bit. So can we as a council at this point assume that those numbers are going to be a lot more on track and true, that we're not going to go back down that same rabbit hole?
So at the end of the year last year, at the end of that audit, we were caught up with the 2023 reconciliation. So in October is 2023, you're 10 months into 2024, that had not been started. So now we're up on 2025. You recall when I started, I was like, this is a two-year process, we're probably two months behind at this part, point of getting caught up.
Which is. So we're still two months behind right now on our bank reconcile.
We went a year plus.
Right.
Six months to get caught up, yes.
Yes, and that's what I want to say because what I didn't understand was trying to continue the reconciliation was is if they were reconciled up to that year and you're going into the next month of that following year, even though you're behind, there was discrepancies in the inability to keep reconciling. And so that's what, I'm just curious because we're still two months behind, which is way better than a whole year. So we're, we're getting there, but I just, I want to feel comfortable with saying, yeah, this is going to be a no brainer, we got good staff in there, they're going to keep going, we're going to be on time with our bank reconcile, we're not going to be needing all these added professional services to do the job of running the nuts and bolts of city hall. So, so that's, when you said that, I was kind of like, oh, oh. So I just kind of wanted to touch on that just for a second, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I mentioned, it was one of our recommendations, get a timely bank rec. If you're two months behind right now, that is great progress from where we were.
Exactly.
Because I think by the time I delivered the audit report, you were already 12 months, 10 months behind in 24 before you even got to finalizing 23's numbers. But as far as maintaining that bank reconciliation, you've got to do it monthly, you've got to do it shortly after that month end, because that's when you're going to catch those errors. You're going to catch mistakes where there's something went in your bank account or something came out of your bank account that you don't have recorded on your end. Typically, we don't see the banks make a lot of errors on their end, it's usually something gets omitted on our client's end. So the sooner you can do it, the better you're going to be, and it's going to, it'll probably be fresh in everybody's mind of what happened last month versus in February.
Six months ago.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. And that was going to be a quick up.
No, I said we're just so close.
And just to give you a quick update on your state reporting form, so we do have that put together, you know, 15th is your deadline to report it. So I think it's actually in the city's hands now, so if you have any changes, let us know. Otherwise, we're going to submit it to the state auditor in 2024 and be, be put to that as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it again. Do we need a motion to approve the audit?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor. Opposed. And we move on to business discussion and possible approval of contract with CDS for continued auditing services.
Justin is still here, but as you recall, a year ago, my concern was knowing that auditing firms were getting frustrated and don't want to do business with cities that don't have their ducks in a row. As Justin was and his team were preparing the audit this year, I was like, would you prepare, would you keep us? Would you propose a, an extended contract? And he was gracious and extended both a three and five year contract. I think that relationship's important, he knows our team, we know his team, the communication is open. You add anything you want.
Sure, I'll come back up here. So yeah, you got, hopefully y'all have it in front of you or maybe it'll be on the screen. But so we're looking at, yeah, three and five year proposals as far as to do the, the city's audit for those fiscal years ending those dates. And one thing that is unique to this is if you do get enough federal dollars, there's a single audit piece of that as well, this is, these fees do not include that, so just keep that in mind as you're considering that. But if there's, are there any questions on the proposal? I know it's, it's a pretty simplified document at this point, but if you have anything for us, we have enjoyed, you know, working with the city. One thing that we, we could look at it, you know, this is, this is strictly a proposal. So if you were to agree to it, this is what we would operate out unless the situation were to change or you have some other concerns for us or needed more assistance, so.
It's national night out.
Type you sent me.
Go get some popsicles.
I'm like, here comes your ride.
You don't want them to be picking you.
No, not that one.
So one thing to mention, sorry. You want to go or?
The only question I have is what is the percentage increase year over year?
So you're looking at, you know, 5% in 20 sit, five, excuse me, five and a half in 26, or excuse me, yeah, five and a half between 26, sorry. I didn't do 24 to 25 on here, but it's 5% from 25 to 26, five and a half from 26 to 27, 5.65 from 27 to 28.
Yay.
And 5.75 from 28 to 29. So it's, and that's kind of largely a reflection of where we see.
You may want to pause just a second.
We'll just pause for a quick second while we have.
National night out.
National night out. Our fire department delivering some nummy tasties for us.
Oh, that's awesome.
Thank you. In fact, they might run out before they get to you.
Oh sweet, they're even open. I'll take a red.
Got to rip around. Oh no, they got back.
There you go, thank you.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
I'm good.
Oh, that's my favorite color.
Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
So cool.
Thank you guys.
I'm going to have a red tongue, red lips.
And that's tart.
No Mr. Misty headaches.
Might need to set this, actually, Sam, can you grab a couple cups, please? Thank you.
So, so anyway, sorry.
Apologies for the, so the.
I've never had that happening before, it's the first time. Smell of weed, wait, treats. So I don't know if that means I'm talking too long or.
No, no. I did make a comment to them when they said they'd be out that, darn it, we're having a council meeting together.
Took that as a hint.
I'm glad they stopped it.
Yeah. Yes, the price increases that you're seeing are largely reflective of kind of us projecting our costs out. Personnel costs are one of our bigger costs at CDS and you've probably heard it tonight, people aren't getting any cheaper to work for or get to work for you in software, continuing education, all these things we kind of project out over the near term period. We try to reflect that through our billing rates and the fees that we charge. And another thing, I mentioned the material audit entries in my presentation and so there's quite a bit between your debt entries, deficit cash, fund closures, accruals. If that is something the city can take back from us, that would help lower that fee. And you typically, we like to see it before we do it, so we want to see that change before we commit to it. But that is certainly a discussion we can have in the future if you were to agree to this proposal, is if we're transferring that work back to the city's books or the city's staff, then we won't have as much time into your audit, so.
Can you tell me again what you label that as, the material?
Material audit adjustments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long have you been doing that? Two years you've been?
The three, three years, yeah.
And this isn't something you're, you're seeking approval for this evening?
No, whenever you're ready, let us know.
I, I think this is good for us to kind of sit and look on, look through and just chew on a bit.
Have your discussion, we'll keep you on the calendar for next year and if it changes, you just let us know.
Okay, thank you.
So also we bumped up our next audit prep to March, I think the end of March, which again should help give us more time. That's another thing staff's committed to doing is to get stuff prepared sooner, so hopefully that gets us more, more in time.
Well, and if, if we truly can do some of these things that have been recommended, so we're doing everything timely, we're not going to be going back and chasing and finding and correcting. So hopefully that will be an easy task to do, to be able to do that.
Instead of waiting until the auditors show up at your door.
All I know is you've been super, super approachable and helpful. Whenever I've called, you've always taken my call and I just think that's commendable. I really do, it's been great.
Well, you got my numbers, so call me anytime.
I do. You're in my contacts.
Any other questions, comments?
Before you go, would you mind commenting about ABDO? I know we've had discussions about them as well.
Yeah, I shouldn't forget them. So Vicky and her team, they've been very helpful. I know we worked with them on a few other audit clients as well, they're a great team to work for. And so if she's watching the meeting, I want to thank her and her team for all their help. And you know, that transition piece, you know, they came in and they kind of did a lot of the, the audit prep, the year end cleanup stuff. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend dumping them and just throwing it all back on your team right away. Maybe a good transition plan to hand some of that off would facilitate a maybe a smoother audit process in the future years. Because it has worked great and it'd be good to have them work side by side with your, your folks here to, to say, okay, here's what we did, here's how we calculated, here's what we did with it. And they can hopefully not fall back or go backwards in that audit prep reconciliation process. But obviously that's up to you guys, but it did work out very well this year and we do have a good working relationship with them, so we kind of just know how each other operate.
Appreciate that. And yes, we do appreciate very much Vicky and the team for the work that they've done for us.
Good, I almost forgot, I would have heard from Vicky if I didn't tell her thank you. So, well good. Yeah, if anything else, just let me know. But enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And you did even get a little popsicle, did you?
I'm going to go find one on the street.
Chase up here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, which brings us to the discussion impossible approval of the ABDO service proposal.
So as you recall, when I started a year ago, ABDO had been in, they were doing reconciliations. You had Shannon that was, or our account person was backlog several months. As he stated, as of the end of October, we just caught up to the end of 2023. So we were still a year behind. We had caught up that year and we're, now we're two months behind, so I think that's pretty substantial. We cut costs by not having ABDO help with that, but ABDO still helped with the audit prep. A lot of the reports in talking with Rose as well as talking with Margaret since she started, a lot of those reports seem kind of duplicitous. We're preparing them for ABDO, we're also preparing them for CDS. And I expressed that concern to Justin, kind of, hey, what are your recommendations? And maybe I could have got in further. He will admit, staff has made strides. We've made a lot of process improvement, we continue to make a lot of process improvement. We talk daily about ways that we can continue to make processes. Ideally, now we're at that point where also you recall in November, when staff left, we're like, we will finish the year this way and then we'll start making a bunch of process improvements. Now we're also at the point of, okay, do we want to make those process improvements here now that it's mid-year? Or do we want to kind of continue down this path and jump in in January 26 with even more? So again, the, the thought process is there, we try to be forward thinking, we try to be aggressive with it. Justin's recommendation was though to not kick ABDO to the curb. This, it's kind of that safety net. And if you look at their proposal, again, it's basically an hourly. So it's something that if they need to jump in, if they need questions, if they want to oversee some things, that's something that I believe Justin would greatly appreciate. I know Margaret has a lot of questions, that'd be helpful and as well as I have questions, I actually just call and Vicky whatever, I know it seems like it's expensive, but when you can clarify a process, it makes sense to have that safety net there. So again, if you look at it, it's an hourly contract. As needed. I kind of as needed and I think that the recommendation would be to, to continue with that.
Can I, I had a couple of questions. And understanding that it was the hourly as needed contract, it spelled out a few specific things as being, so the scope of services. Assessment of AP processes, so accounts payable. Assessment of accounts receivable and assessment of month end procedures, including bank rec and any training as needed. All of these, again, as needed. Two questions here. One, we did have a contract for their services as needed, did that run through the end of this year? What is the timing of that contract? Because I want to make sure we're not doubling up on the contracts that we have with them.
It wouldn't double up. My understanding was that we started a new one, I'd have to go back to last, I think November when it was passed.
Okay.
Maybe it was October, but it's, it's not an overlapping.[1729.75] Maybe it was October, but it's, it's not an overlapping. Um, and again, it was something that we tried to actually save funds by not using them and doing ourselves, and we did a lot in-house. But I still think there's some areas, again, we admit there's areas you can always improve, you can always create more efficiencies. Uh, this is something that was, you know, created in 2022, probably on. So, uh, that, the city unfortunately was in that position, but we made huge strides to make it right.
Yeah.
And I think Justin's concern is, again, with, without having that oversight, you'd want to make sure you don't take two steps back.
Yeah.
Uh, there was not a base fee or anything. It was just hourly period.
Correct.
Okay.
Like a retainer fee you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yep. Um, just to be clear on that, it looks like this goes till the end of this year, the contract.
Was it July, I thought it said?
I think the end of July to the end of December 31st.
So it's a six-month.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I kind of was wondering the same thing as you when we looked at, because the other thing that was discussed is there was different service or branches within ABDO. I don't know if that's all covered under there, Scott, because remember, we talked about the, the issues with the payroll versus the audit. Is it all under that same contract?
That payroll issue was a separate matter, and that was a separate contract that was brought in. This is just for the audit help and the finance help.
Okay, so that and that, they were both under ABDO, but this is the only one that will stick for the audit. My, my only question is too, is the fact that, because there was a little bit that happened before, where there was an abundance amount of professional service available to the staff, and pretty soon they were just doing it instead of staff learning it. And I'm not saying that at all, but I mean, I'm just wondering as far as, how are we going to ensure that we truly get to the point where we don't need ABDO services, that our staff feels comfortable because they've been experienced enough, they're, they're doing more training versus doing the tasks? That, that's what I would want to focus more on, so, versus just doing it.
When I started, you had one person that was so backlog, and the processes were all dumped on this one person, and ABDO was doing it. Since then, it has been staff doing it. And, you know, Rose has done a phenomenal job, stepped up. Um, Margaret's continued to work with Rose and stepped up. The processes are there. Again, I'm not seeing that we are taking two steps back when we talk through with Rose as well as Margaret, ways that we can keep improving.
I just want that insurance.
Keep in mind also that Rose will be, um, phasing out at some point as well, but...
She should be.
This was an uphill battle, and it's, it's a lot less. I mean, being within two months or three months, whatever, of final being caught up on reconciliation is, is very close. If we can get with that and get some more training, I'm going to have a proposal at the next one from Margaret to go to another in-person training with Civic, which will continue to help. The plan is to stay caught up with reconciliations, uh, even with our new administrative assistants. It's keeping them involved in the financial process and explaining why we need the division of duties. Uh, when we go through and we see the findings and read those, it's how can we address this? How can we talk this out? Who opens the mail? Who does the AP? Who writes the checks? Who signs the checks? Things like that. So the processes are there, but it's also making sure that you have somebody overseeing, if I need to pick up the phone, that may not be a city clerk in another town, that's somebody that's actually familiar with Civic, somebody that's, um, familiar with how our auditor likes things prepared, somebody that can step in this, familiar with the city and help out.
Yeah. See, but I, I thought that was kind of your role too. I, I mean, that's just my assumption, that you are the overseer of all that to some extent, and that might be an error on my part, that you oversee what they are doing in a way. I mean, I, the other thing to the component of the Civic component, because that's the other thing, we have Civic, we have ABDO, and, and correct me, I just, I don't know if they do separate entities or if they're, if, like you say, the duplicity of the, of the tasks. So if we're going to Civic and we're doing ABDO, I mean, are we double, whatever?
Can I just back up?
Civic is the software that we use.
Yep.
Being trained on that software is always important. I do oversee everybody, but as was discussed, separation of duties was a specific finding. So somebody opens the mail, I do accounts payable, code, approve, look at it, that goes to be paid out, somebody prints that check, the next person stuffs those checks. These are separate divisions that you have to have.
Right.
But, correct, I oversee and make sure they're done. On occasion, I open the mail, on occasion, I enter those in. So it's being balanced on all that, but to do that entire process for one person is going to get another finding, and that's why we have the division of duties.
So, and that's kind of why, yeah, the civics, about the civics?
Uh, two, two things. So first is the, uh, the oversight that he is talking about is the, I need to phone an accountant friend. This is basically the phone a friend to call an accountant, to get that support, bless you, not the oversight of function in the city.
So like a CPA or something on that line?
And that's, that's basically what this is, is just that phone a friend, hey, can we validate that this process will, you know, meets our needs or is okay? Um, so in that respect, to answer that part of the, your question, the other part is that Civic is our accounting software.
Right.
They are not accountants.
Right.
So the calls to them are usually training or support on the software and the system.
Well, that helps, because I thought they were used more to help support with how things were being entered and whatnot. I thought when we had the prior staff, the prior administrator, Civic was brought on to help in addition to ABDO.
So they, they were initially to help with some of the cleanup and the bankrupt.
Yeah, so more of the accounting, yeah, so.
Not the accounting, just some entries.
Okay.
That's, they were just doing some entries for us, and that was to help get caught up. That was only a short-time, one-time thing with Civic that we asked them to do some extra help.
And so now Civic is not doing that other than what's related to software?
Correct.
Okay, that makes more sense to me then.
Just training.
I appreciate that clarification.
I just have one other question. So when they talk about processes and, so are you guys documenting processes? Because, you know, you know, turnover happens, and what we, you know, what you probably don't want to have is somebody turn over, and then all of a sudden we have to engage in these services because nothing was documented. So I'm hoping that we're documenting processes and that we have things so that if someone was gone for a length of time because somebody got hit by a bus on their way out of here, God forbid, but somebody could step in because there's some processes and guardrails written down.
And that's also why we cross-train.
Yeah.
So again, it's, while my primary duty as example may be accounts payable, the simple thing of going and getting the mail, I probably do that once a week, of opening them, of coding them, of entering them in, isn't primarily what I do. Usually I code, it goes to, you know, our finance person, but that's why we also cross-train and have, have that familiarity. That's why we have more than one signature.
As long as it's written down.
Is it written down, man, too?
Yeah.
Is it written down? Do you have a policy manual or like a actual process like you said?
I think as you're, as you are refining those processes, they do need to be documented.
I think they should. I mean, it also goes along with a job description. What's your job description? I open up the mail, I, you know, whatever, but...
I do this on Fridays. This is my role, because we were told that at one point there was a whole log of all the cross-training, and it was all documented, but it wasn't.
Cross-training is truly happening there? We're not being told that it happens.
But no, cross-training is only as good as how you document, because you, you should be able to hire a new person, hand them the manual, and have the ability to start understanding what their role is in this particular situation. And so just to make sure that that is getting done as part of the processes, I agree with Chris 100%.
And I think once as a staff, because we have a very new staff, and they're figuring out all these things, I think that that should be a variety to, to create that and...
Yeah, I mean, hopefully we've been creating them as we got one through this process with this.
There are a lot of how-to manuals back there that you can either, they're saved or a physical paper documents that, yes, you can go through. There's manuals of passwords, things like that. There's a lot of the how-to things there. Is that something that somebody can walk in the door and just do what an accountant does? No. But can they be trained over time? This is a process, and then, yeah, we can pick it up. Or if somebody has experience in bringing them in, they can typically follow that.
But to have a manual that's specific to Maple Lake and the job descriptions, because we've even changed a lot of those job descriptions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so in all essence, as these, these particular individuals are learning their job and their roles, it should be documented so we know who's doing what and how it's being done. Because that, that would also ensure that the accountability, that people know their jobs. So, and if, like you say, if someone's sick, someone else can jump in and, so.
All right, so bringing us back to the ABDO discussion, is there, um, just from your perspective, Scott, acknowledging that we have used them less and less throughout this year, uh, from the original conversation, um, are you anticipating that it will be, if you were to guess, approximately how many hours per week or month?
Like this year, we didn't use them until we got to audit time. And with that, it may be more, it won't be having them prepare reports, but it'll be asking them for assistance with that. So, again, I see more, it's going to be, again, it's not like a set month, this is what we spend. There's going to be months that it's high, but there's others that there will be no expense, just like...
Most likely, your percentage of time that you use them for, for the next audit period, will probably continue to become less and less as you...
Ideally, what, internally what our thought is, and talking with Justin, is do this one more year. We reduce it from last year, reduce it this year, and then maybe we move away.
Yeah.
But, and absolutely right, it's important to try and keep staff.
Yep.
And this, this contract gets us to the end of the year, which is not our audit time. You, you suggested that'll be in March, so just knowing that we are probably going to do another six-month contract. Um, I just see this, like you've said, as a, as a great safety net. It's there if we need it. You know, we're not getting charged for not using them, so.
So what are we using them between July 31st and December 31st for?
Just a safety net.
But audit is done.
But the audit's done, yeah.
They're the phone a friend with questions.
It may be a simple thing of, we've talked through a process, it's just not quite meshing. Um, right now, so we scan in a, we scan in an invoice, it's coded, it goes out. Is there a way more efficiently to do this? And there's, you know, maybe, hey, have you heard about this new software? That's an extra expense, but if that saves time, then maybe we need to look at it.
Right.
Or it may be, um, what if you considered having somebody else code it, and then you, somebody reviewed it and somebody signed it? Just like the journal entries, one person prepares, one person reviews and signs. It's the little advice that you don't know until you ask or until we start having these discussions and, hey, can we improve this process? Again, that's why we kind of sit and talk. It's a small shop, so it's easy to have those brainstorming ideas.
But I'm assuming, though, the period between July 31st and December 31st is probably pretty minimal for ABDO until you start reaching that audit, when you're starting your audit prep.
Correct.
It would be nice, too, if we could get it to the point where we can, we can see the hours that are built instead of like the, just the dollar amount. I mean, I know you get these details, you'd share them with me, but I don't know if that's possible. Just because, um, you know, one month we build 17, the next month we build 40,000 to the city.
Also, to that point, right, there's different levels and hourly rates. So when you're looking at one number, it's like, is that going towards a associate or accounting specialist? Is that a manager? Is it a senior manager? Are we dealing with a partner who's $510 an hour?
So, and I was seeing that, excuse me, firemen are trying to kill me by making me choke on the freezy.
Sure blame the firemen.
But that we just say, okay, start with the associate.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, guide them to...
Yeah, I hope, that's what I hope we're doing.
Those are the folks that we want them. So, all right, we have a lot of, excuse me.
I mean, I, I get it. I totally get it.
Yep, and the contract, I think it was the 60 days we can cancel it, if I read in there, if we say in two months, hey, let's look at this again in January or March, so.
I like to make a motion that we have them as a safety guard and kind of check in monthly to see where we're at and just be a little bit more aware of what we're spending.
So are you approving the ABDO service proposal?
Yes, I'm making a motion to approve the ABDO proposal.
And I'll second that.
Motion and second. Further discussion. Um, and I think that also included just the request for a, an hour, a monthly tally of how many hours.
Hours.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. You ready for us, George? Uh, next item is discussion and approval of our resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Council, George Allerton, Riverland Securities. Uh, thank you for the time on your agenda here. So, uh, I'll be referring to, in your packets, there's one that says bond sale summary at the top, and that will hit the highlights. I'll walk through that and address any questions. So, um, if you don't recall, I'm the guy that shows up when you need to borrow money. Um, so, on that summary page, which is page two, um, I'll just kind of walk through this page. Uh, the purpose is, is really, we're funding two projects. Uh, one is the Fifth Street West Road and Utility Project. That's the bigger item. That's, um, just a little under $2.5 million. And then there was a 2020, in Chuck Bozer's terminology here, it's the 2025 Structure Rehabilitation Project, or a stormwater project, uh, for $300,000. So that's your financing with this bond issue. So, in many discussions with, as this project developed, uh, discussions with your administrator, with the developer, with Kennedy and Graven, um, kind of trying to get to the right financing structure, because, and, and even, um, your administrator, I think, says it to me best today, this project got great traction. Um, is that good, Scott? Great traction? Okay. Uh, meaning that there's a lot of interest out there in, in the lots, in the, in the development, which is, which is terrific. And that's why we structured the bonds the way that we did. So, you know, a traditional street project that you may do might have a 15-year term, might have a call date or that date when you can prepay or refinance it about halfway through the bonds. In this project, because, you know, best-case scenario, you don't have the bonds that long. It gets fully developed, let's say, within five years. That's why we structured the bonds the way we did. We put them out with a 12-year term just to be conservative, um, allow you some time in, in case there's a, a slowdown in the housing market. But then we put a four-and-a-half-year call date on the bonds, and that's the ability to prepay the principal on the bonds and exit early without penalty. So, so that's really important, because traditionally you'd see that call date in seven years or eight years. So we're getting that earlier call date on this bond issue, which is very important, because best-case scenario, we pay these bonds off, once we hit that call date in 2030 or at any date thereafter, so.
It's, so we can pay off at any date thereafter. It's not just, if we don't meet that, then we got to wait the rest.
That, that is correct, Mayor. And it's, and it's always at the city's discretion, so there's no investor or bond purchaser on the other side of the equation saying, we want you to call these bonds or, or not. It's always at the city's discretion. So, and you can do, um, another important point, it's prepaid in whole or in part. So, for example, if you've got $2 million of, you know, lot sale revenue or, or development-type revenue, but you have $2.5 million at the call date of principal remaining, you can pay it, pay down partial. You, you can do $2 million pay down instead of the full two-and-a-half, so.
Gotcha.
So as part of this bond, as we've done with the city on, on other bond issues, we've worked with your staff on the assignment of a credit rating. And so we worked with Standard and Poor's on the assignment of the AA minus credit rating, and that, that's the, the rating the city has had, um, historically. And your administrator did a great job preparing for the call. We held a, um, an hour rating interview, if you will, with, with Standard and Poor's, and the outcome of that was, um, the, again, the reassignment of the AA minus. Being in that AA category is, is a credit strength for the city. It helps, uh, to get a lot of good eyes on your bond issue. Um, I'll go into a little bit of the weeds here. The, so if you look at your bond, about the first half of the bond was sold to money managers. Uh, that, that means, you know, high net worth individuals that are, you know, looking for tax-exempt debt. The second half of your bonds were sold to community banks. So that, that's approximately who's, who are active buyers in the bond market today. Um, couple of the, uh, items of note from the credit agency was, uh, the strengths they noted were the city's healthy reserves, actually noted by your auditor tonight as well, um, seven months he noted, uh, in reserve, uh, healthy reserves supported by stable property tax revenue, uh, management's conservative approach, uh, to the budget, and, uh, you've got a strong history of positive operational performance. So, uh, so certainly, strong on the management side, strong on the budgetary performance side. As noted in the report as well, good growth in your tax base. So we've seen, you know, you get the benefit of being in the metropolitan area, um, but along with that, you're seeing nice growth in your market value. So that's, as well, you're not one of those communities that has just one concentrated large taxpayer. You've got diversity in your tax base. So you've got good residential base, good commercial industrial base as well. So, um, so the bond itself, again, 12-year term, four-and-a-half-year call date. The closing date, uh, is September 4th. That's the day the money hits your account. And, uh, again, that call date, February 1 of 2030 and any date thereafter. The true interest cost is, uh, the weighted average interest rate adding in, uh, some of the costs of issuance is 4.3% over the term of the bond. So, um, actually, we've seen a nice little dip in interest rates here over the last week, and so we feel that the, the interest rates, actually, from the time that Scott joined us on a pre-pricing call. And so, we feel that the, the interest rates, actually, from the time that Scott joined us on a pre-pricing call. That was important because last, um, let's see, when did we have a pricing call? Monday, Monday we had a preliminary pricing call where we talked about the market, we talked about comparable sales. And then, you know, what are market indices doing? And so then we pegged to that indexy and then it came to your favor and dropped a little bit, so we adjusted interest rates accordingly. So, um, from the time we started until tonight, um, we saw a nice little reduction in interest rates, which benefits the city. So, um, I talked about that call date. Uh, once you reach that call date, you still have $2 million of principal outstanding. So, um, you would have paid down 690,000 at that point. So, that is, Mayor and Council, the, the quick highlight of your project. Of course, a small little storm project, that's, uh, we talked a little bit or heard your auditor talking about your storm fees, storm utility. That's the source of revenue to pay that. The large source of revenue to pay back the larger source of the bonds or the Fifth Street project is assessing the developer. And then, uh, there's some city costs associated with extending utilities as well, so. Any questions, Mayor and Council?
None, other than I really liked the numbers we had in our packet that said zero for interest rates.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering.
I was wondering what happened, it was like, how did we get zero?
It was zero because we didn't have, you didn't have the interest rate yet, but I kind of liked it for a moment.
It was like really cool.
Not even in the COVID year for the interest rates. But, um, no, when you get your, when you get your packets, there's a preliminary resolution, which, until today happens, we don't know what the interest rates will be, so. Later this afternoon, earlier today, you would have gotten that final resolution, so.
I appreciate that, I appreciate you also explaining and walking through and setting that earlier call date if we were able to pay this off early and save on some interest, um, in the long run. Hoping that properties.
Get those lots sold.
They all sell and things go really well. With that, are there any other questions from the council for George?
What was the, hit the account date again?
September 4th.
September 4th, thank you.
September 4th, yes.
And the rates are 5% throughout the whole?
4.3%.
Yeah, that actually, um, that's on page three, says Exhibit B Pricing Summary, is that where you are, Lori?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Counselor, host.
No, Lori's fine.
Okay, the, and just a little explanation of that. So you see on that page, there's, there's two columns. The 5% is, is the interest rates throughout the term. And then the yield, yield is the actual market for a AA minus rated general obligation bond. So the difference between those two is what's called bond premium. And it's not just a, uh, a term we come up with, it's a, it's, uh, money that the investors have to pay to earn at that higher rate of return. Uh, there's a nominal benefit to an investor to have a 5% interest rate and pay a premium to get it. That money, and there's $160,000 of premium in the bond issue. We take that money and downsize the principal on the bonds. So you still end up with the same dollar amount that you, you would have started with. But this is the way that nearly 100% of publicly offered bonds are sold. And, and so it's, it's very commonplace. So it doesn't necessarily penalize the city to see that 5% because it's offset by that premium.
So, but the true loan, so, sorry, the true interest cost is 4.3%.
That, that is right, correct.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I was kind of.
Start talking numbers.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any additional questions? Hearing none, I will seek a motion to approve the, uh, resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-39, awarding the sale of general obligation bond, 2025 A.
I will second.
Motion and second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out and explaining all of that for us.
Lot of numbers tonight.
Yes.
Good luck in your prep.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
All right, the next, uh, item up for bid. Discussion and possible approval of the ordinance enacting licensing and regulation of massage businesses and services. I'll turn this over to you, Sam, Mr. Kitchen.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, I'm presenting, uh, actually, two items in your packet tonight, 8D and 8E. One is, uh, an ordinance, uh, amending the code to provide for, uh, massage business licensing and, uh, regulation of massage businesses and services. And then, 8E is just a resolution approving the publication of that ordinance if you choose to, um, adopt the ordinance tonight. I'll note that, uh, this was originally in the July, uh, I think, 15th packet. Uh, we didn't have a quorum that night, so we pushed it to this meeting. But, uh, I know the council is familiar with this from it being in the packet before. It is a licensing ordinance, and I'd like to just give kind of a brief overview of the different sections of it and, and kind of what it does. I'll note that I think it's based off of another, uh, community's massage license ordinance that I think was structured well and, and works well for, for that city. And it seems like these are pretty standardized, so, um, you can make some, some changes to it if, if you want. And if it doesn't work, uh, you can always come back and amend this like any ordinance. But, um, it seems like these generally work well for most communities and are kind of similar. So, the, so, I'm just gonna walk through, it should be in, I think, page 62 of your packet is where the ordinance starts. Obviously, we've got kind of standard purpose and, you know, definitions language that gives some kind of structure to the, uh, ordinance and what the terms mean. Section 1703 kind of talks about the two specific licenses that this creates. Uh, so you have a therapeutic massage enterprise license, this, uh, basically licenses the massage business. And then, uh, a massage therapist license, so this basically licenses the individuals who work at those businesses or provide massage services. I want to point out, uh, 1703C, uh, because you do have some, uh, massage businesses and massage therapists in town that would basically come under, um, this licensing ordinance. And I want to note that especially because, uh, the way the ordinance is currently written, they would have to, uh, be licensed by December 31st, 2025. So you give a little runway for those existing businesses and individuals to get licensed by the city if you adopt this. But, um, you could change that date if you want, if you prefer an earlier date or, you know, um, even a later date to get, uh, those businesses and individuals licensed. You could choose to do that and make that change by motion tonight.
That was one of the questions that I had initially asked. And not intending for it to be an onerous licensing process for either the legitimate businesses in town and/or our staff.
Right.
I want to make sure that, I mean, December 31st seems quite a ways out. I had initially, uh, asked, could it be a 30-day, so, you know, by September 5th or? But I think just considering the amount of work that our staff will need to put in as well as the, the back and forth with the, you know, with the businesses and/or therapists to collect all of that information, to do background checks, that, um, 30 days, I, I just want to make sure we're not making it difficult for our staff as well to do all of this work. So, thinking that it should be, uh, two months.
A 60-day.
Yeah, a 60-day, just to allow for that.
That's what I was thinking too, I mean.
Especially if they're doing the background checks and, and the other piece too is the national background check too. Now that's put into place where it's not just state-run.
Right.
You do a national background check to check for any outstanding issues.
And just to, to clarify, this is a license that is given from the city?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, so, uh, no complicated structure with like the state being involved, like some of the more recent licensing, like cannabis and.
Because I know the one is also licensed in acupuncture, but I don't know that, you know, the massage license is.
Right.
You know, just so long as it's, I'm clear, it's from the city, so.
Yeah, and, and that's actually a good segue. There are certain exceptions for, uh, um, health providers that are licensed, uh, by the state. So, um, for example, in 1704, you've got basically, um, doctors, chiropractors, uh, physical therapists. Those, uh, sort of, health providers are already licensed for the state and this ordinance provides an exception for that. And then, 1704B kind of, it's this very similar, basically provides an exception for someone who's working like solely for, for example, a chiropractor. So if you're a massage therapist, uh, in town and you were basically working exclusively under a chiropractor, you wouldn't be required to get, um, a massage therapist license under the ordinance. And then, I think, 1704C is just specific types of health providers, um, that might be in town. So, again, just to reiterate, you've got two specific licenses, one for businesses and one for massage therapists that might be working for those businesses, but then there's exception for other types of licensed, um, businesses and massage therapists, and those are fairly standard. 1705, uh, 06 and 07 are kind of all, I'll, I'll sort of put those together in the same basket because it's kind of the, the licensing process. So, uh, businesses or individuals would be required to apply to the city, uh, for the license. The massage, uh, business license will be approved by the council, so you'll review the information. And that'll be on a form that the city will just have, uh, to provide those businesses and individuals. The, there's, there'll be a fee for the license that'll be set, uh, annually by your fee schedule. So you might recall that beginning of the year, you adopt a fee schedule by resolution, and so those fees are set, set there.
Is that a one-time fee you're doing, or do you need to discuss later down the road?
It's an, I believe it will be an annual fee.
Because you want to make certain that their, their business stays true to their licensure, that there hasn't been any other issues.
Right, yeah, I mean, most, I think most of the fees that are set in this fee schedule are annual fees, but that's how I would typically see any license fee, so like tobacco licenses are typically annual fees.
Can I just ask a clarifying question with regards to the difference between a healthcare provider and? So if someone, I, if someone is operating as a massage therapist, let's say, out of a holistic business, but they don't actually have licensure under their, under their practice, like a chiropractor or a therapist or a doctor, they would be required to obtain a license for that practice, correct?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, there's only really narrow kind of exceptions for, uh, businesses that are operating as a hospital, nursing home, hospice, group home. And then, um, for the individuals, the exceptions basically relate to, um, you know, healthcare providers that are licensed under the state.
And it's per therapist that's established, or per massage therapist that's at the location? It's not just one person that says, hey, I'm getting my license, I'm gonna open a massage parlor, and then I'm gonna have these five people and they're not licensed?
Yeah, that's why they're the two, there's the operator and the therapist.
Okay.
So, that's, that's why there are the two, there's the business license and that every other person.
Within there.
Within that needs to have, also be licensed.
That's exactly correct. There's a definition for massage therapist, but I mean, we, I need to get into that. But the, but yeah, it would be each individual that's providing those services with, within a massage business has to get licensed as well.
And what kind of guard rules do we put around that as far as, you know, if some, everything goes through and we have everybody, but staff turns over, right? Or staff gets added because business is booming? How do you, how, how does the city ensure that we're making sure everybody there is still licensed?
It's a good question. So, part of it is that the city's got some administrative enforcement power under the ordinance, so you'll, you'll, the.
There was a section in here that.
Talks about they have to have their license obtained on the wall or visible when you enter? And if they're coming in yearly, you'd at least have a yearly check on who's your employee, I, I'm assuming?
There's, there's inspections under, I think it's 17.
Page 69 of the document.
L, so, yeah, the, as, as part of this ordinance, the city will have the ability to basically inspect businesses and ensure that they're meeting the licensing requirements, um, require that they, you know, provide information to the city. But, um, yeah, I, I think that those are kind of written into the ordinance.
All right, just want to make sure, I mean, what is a, what's a reasonable notice? Do we give them 10 business days, you know, that type of thing?
24 hours.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that there's a, are you referring to where it talks about reasonable notice and the inspections provision? I mean, it's not defined, but I think, you know, it, it would probably be more than a day and that would probably be reasonable.
Also, too, you talked about these forms, are, do we have these forms or are you guys, are we gonna be provided forms that they would fill out?
I, I'm not sure, what I would suggest with, whenever you adopt a licensing ordinance, I mean, typically cities have, cities that have these types of ordinances have the forms that kind of track this. And so, with the specifics, actually, we probably have some in our office that we can provide staff as well. But particularly because this is based off of, you know, like a template that a lot of cities have, like, those cities should have license applications that staff can use and we can work with Scott on that.
Just like with the ordinance, we plagiarize.
Oh, I don't care if you plagiarize, I just want to make sure you can plagiarize.
And then, and then will you help Scott of kind of figuring out the fee for the cost and that kind of stuff?
Well, I think, you said we had a fee schedule already?
Uh, well, this will get added to our fee schedule.
We would have to add it.
And you could, I mean, if you, so the way this is set up, the current businesses would have to be licensed, um, by December 31st, but it sounds like council want, prefers 60 days. So you could easily just have a simple, um, resolution, changing your fee schedule and adding those fees before those 60 days are up. So that's what I would recommend because you're not gonna, if you're gonna move it up, um, you just put that fee schedule in place now. And same with the application, you can look at what other cities have done in terms of a fee. You know, it has to be reasonable, it has to be, um, not exorbitant, but, um, it's, the easiest thing you can do is change your fee schedule, so.
Okay.
And that will give us time as well to have staff look into the actual cost of the state and national background checks, any of the other work that they have to do so that we get, we are setting that fee according, accordingly so that we are covering our costs as well as, um, you know, fee schedules are not to be really a moneymaker too much. However, we want to make sure that it's appropriate. I would suggest or question, and we can chat about the fee schedule part of it later, for staff to take a look into what that would look like and what those costs might be. But curious, as you're looking into that, if there would be any difference in cost from an initial application? an initial application versus a renewal?
Right.
If a renewal is a lesser process.
Sure.
Because we've already been there.
Depends, because you'd still want to do a background check.
You'd still want to do a background check.
Still do the background checks and there may be some other work that does not have to also be, or information that has to or doesn't have to be collected. The other question that I had was around the photo ID card, because I like the idea that there is a photo ID card that would be issued to individuals. Do we have the capability to create such things at the moment?
The post office does.
I would defer to staff on that.
We can buy one. Maybe just a laminate card, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can make something, it's not going to be.
We can figure something out.
Okay. I, that was the only other piece that I questioned.
Yeah, it's nice to match a name with a face.
Yeah, sure is.
Conibility and, like you, you would say, guardrails, yeah.
Yeah, I'll keep just kind of walking through the ordinance here, but as you pointed out, there's some, there's the form, there's the photo ID card, so there's kind of, you know, an administrative process for dealing with these license applications. There are certain persons and businesses that are ineligible for a license, and this is pretty typical, so if you looked at like a tobacco ordinance, you would probably find some of the same things, so like obviously, like if there's been a massage business or individual that's been convicted of a crime related to a massage business, you'll have, they'll be ineligible for a license. If they've provided false information on the license application, they would not be eligible. If they've had a license that was previously suspended or revoked, you would typically be able to not provide license for a very good basis. There are also specific requirements or specific prohibitions on locations that might be ineligible, so if a massage business is operated out of a property that has delinquent taxes, they would not be eligible for a license, or if they're not zoned for a particular purpose, they would not be able to obtain a massage business license. Sorry, go ahead, Council.
Was there something about citizenship too?
Correct, yeah, there's, so if you go to 1708, I believe it's B4, there, no licenses can be issued to someone who is not a citizen of the United States or a resident alien, so someone who owns, has a green card is, is the common reference there. So, number of different reasons why, or safeguards why, for ensuring that licenses are going to businesses or individuals that we want to be operating in the city. There are, so 1710 is.
Can I ask, sorry, just before you go on from that, looking at B sub 2, convicted of any crime deemed by the city to be directly related to the massage business? I'm wondering if we can add any other types of crimes? So if it was not directly related to the massage business, but might have been.
Drug activity.
Sexual misconduct, yeah, drug activity, any of those others, is there a way to word it such that at the discretion of, you know, convicted of crimes which at the discretion of or deemed by the city? It says to be directly related to the massage business, but can that be expanded in a way that we're not getting into legal gray? Not too gray?
We don't want to be biased either, you know.
But getting to the place where if there is, you know, if there are convictions for certain crimes, even if it wasn't directly related to specifically a massage business?
What example are you thinking of, besides drug activity?
Could be tax evasion.
That's already in there, he said.
Oh, is that already in there?
Yeah, and what I would, so I actually think your ordinance covers this to some degree because there are specific provisions that, that licensees will have to adhere to, so, and I'll get into that shortly, but basically, licensees under the ordinance are obviously not allowed to have sexual contact with the clients, there's certain requirements about clothing and covering, and if a massage business had, or a massage therapist had been convicted of a crime related to that, you would have a reasonable basis to deny the license. I'm a little hesitant to suggest that you shouldn't specifically include a part, like a crimes unrelated to, I guess I'm struggling to figure out how broad you want to go in terms of like crimes that give you reason to deny a license, but there are other provision, like substantive provisions of the ordinance, and if you were to receive an application that kind of related to some of those substantive requirements, you'd, and they had been convicted of a crime that said, you know, that this person had sexual contact with, or some kind of sex crime, you would be able to deny the license in most cases, so I mean, I'm little.
Can I clarify then? Sorry to interrupt, but can I clarify then? So if somebody were to have been, using your example, convicted of some sort of sex crime, but it was not at that time directly related to a massage business, they were off committing this elsewhere.
Trafficking.
I, I'm just asking, that relatedness part.
Yeah.
Is what I'm trying to clarify?
Right.
Because the way this is stated, that convicted of any crime deemed to be directly related to the massage business.
Right.
What's the implication of that definition? That's the thing, I agree, it's vague, right?
So I guess under your.
It's not vague enough.
Under your.
It's always too specific.
Under your ordinance, there are, there are substantive requirements about not engaging in sex crimes as part of your massage licensed services and massage business, operating in a massage business, so in that hypothetical, you would be able to deny a license because you have a massage business that, or individual applying for a massage therapy license that has been convicted of a, of a violation that directly relates to your ordinance requirements. So I think you're covered there, I think it's actually vague enough that you have what you need in those requirements.
Okay, thank you for that. And just to build on what you said, there was, you know, of course, the fun discussion that had been had on social media, but there was a conversation around a denial of a license because of a prior tax evasion conviction. Does this cover those types of things as well? Because sex crimes, we can say, yep, that as a bucket kind of fits in this wording, but what are those other types of things?
I didn't even, I didn't even say that because of that, I didn't, I forgot about that.
Okay.
But I'm just, I was just throwing that out as an example, you know, money laundering, that type of thing.
He did read though, that tax evasion was one of the things that he stated on there.
So there's, under 1708, not A9, any person who owes property taxes or assessments that are due and delinquent, that would be a.
But that's due to the city.
Correct.
And this is convictions for.
Different location.
Correct, so that, I, that would not be an explicit reason to deny a license under your ordinance as written. But a business that owes taxes that are due and delinquent, you would not.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically be prohibited from providing them a license.
Well, and can we just say owes property taxes or assessments and take up to the city that are due and delinquent?
Oh, I, I have no issue with that.
Removing to the city.
Sure, yeah. I would just suggest that you add that to any motion to approve the ordinance, but yeah, I think it's reasonable to basically prohibit any business or massage therapist from having a license as long as, if they have taxes or assessments that are due or delinquent, and not necessarily just to the city.
Okay.
Yep.
So strike to the city in section 1708A.
Or due, but what about if it was corrected, but there's a history there?
Does that go back to the discrepancy of the city, of the council?
It would.
Discretion.
Discretion.
Did I say, I'm sorry, David speaks, sorry.
Discrepancy.
Sorry.
Discretion. It's all good. It's all good.
I know everybody's got my back.
Councilmember Chanlon, I think, I wasn't sure if there was a question there, but the.
Just to make sure, I mean, if somebody has delinquent taxes or whatever, but they correct that.
Yes, and that would be, those businesses would basically be ineligible for a license if they have delinquent taxes.
Perfect. All this because of.
Well, it's.
It's good.
It's necessary.
No, it's good, it's good.
Yeah. I'll let you finish your review before I.
Right, so 1708 talks about some of the same, some of the licensees that would not be eligible. 1709 does the same for locations. 1710 is kind of the meat of the ordinance, there's just substantive requirements about massage businesses, so for example, they'd be required to post license. The license is basically for a specific physical place or premise, and the massage business can only operate the massage services in that licensed area. They can't transfer the license, so for example, if a business in town that was licensed wanted to sell their business to another entity, they would not be able to just simply transfer that license.
Very good.
Does that also? Name changes, a business name changes?
I don't think so, I think.
They've got the affiliation with an enterprise or the DVA would be.
Right, yeah, it's my understanding that would not, that this prohibition on transferring the license would not prohibit a massage business from changing its registered name, if that's what you're asking?
I guess I'm asking if a business changed its name, so we license it under Joe's massage parlor to, and then they changed their name to Friends.
But is it the same, is it the same person?
Is it the same owner?
I guess that's what we're licensing.
Yeah, we're licensing the owner, right?
That, I don't think that would be a transfer of.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, right.
And can I, well, we're somewhat paused there, jump back to the zoning.
Sure.
So 1709 sub B, improper zoning, has not obtained a conditional use permit or other required land use approval as outlined in the zoning code, so question to both of you, to you and to Scott, what, are there zoning criteria we should be considering? Or that you have seen others enact for such establishments or?
Specific to massage businesses?
Yes.
I can't say definitively that this is something that most cities zone for specifically. I think what's intended by this provision is that any massage business that is required, for example, to have a variance to operate or a conditional use permit has to.
Just because of location.
Right, this is just a reference to general land use approvals that might be required. There are no specific zoning provisions to this licensing ordinance, and I think that would be a separate conversation for, for one, you'd have to follow the zoning process to adopt those.
Correct.
Regulations, but I don't have really an exhaustive perspective on like what other cities do if they zone massage businesses or, you know, if they have adopted separate zoning regulations.
And that, that didn't necessarily mean to be, I was just curious of that.
And do we know, is it an approved business for our B1 business district at this point?
Well, that would be the zoning.
Yeah.
Piece of it.
But as we go through a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance update, that's something that could be considered?
Yeah. But our current zoning, it's an okay business to be within our current system?
It is not restricted.
Okay.
Because we don't call out absolutely every single type of business that can be, but we do call out those that can't.
Yeah.
Just moving on, so the 1710, talk about the transfer of license being prohibited. I'll just kind of give a brief overview of the rest of them, because sort of touched on it already, but there are specific requirements about coverage of clients that are receiving massage services, there's specific clothing requirements for massage therapists, there are prohibitions on massage in certain body parts, there are specific restrictions on hours of operation, and so specifically, businesses and massage therapists have to operate within 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM on any day of the week. There are, we talked about the inspections piece, there's a right of the city to inspect these businesses and ensure that they are meeting the requirements of the ordinance. There's requirements to post rates and the license itself within massage businesses, and there are just some other requirements about not offering basically illicit activities within the business.
I also see that K, you kind of skipped over, but proof of local residency.
Correct, yeah.
Required. I mean, is a 50 mile radius too wide or, I mean, is that normal?
That would include the metro.
I don't have a good sense of whether that's.
Which is realistic, what's that?
Yeah, part of the metro.
I mean, that, they have to live within a 50 mile, I mean, what if we said they had to live within 25 miles of their business?
And that's an, the owner must.
The owner, yeah.
Correct, yeah, the, the way 17.10K is written, the licensee or operator, managing partner or manager of a business must show proof of residency within 50 miles of the city. I don't have a good sense of whether that's.
I was just curious.
A common requirement, I would say it's a little unusual to have a requirement in that for licensing in general, but I have seen requirements like that for tobacco businesses and other kind of city licensed businesses, and, you know, as long as it's essentially reasonable and tied to the purpose of the ordinance.
And then they're going to have to show proof of it anyway on their license.
And we even have that, I mean, even when we talked about even just being a landlord, we talked about having a 50 mile radius of the owner being within.
Yeah.
So.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
1711, this kind of goes back to the administration piece, but, so, annual license, annual fee, and this kind of also outlines the process for revoking or suspending licenses. This would be a council process, so if a license was suspended, the council would have a hearing. have a hearing to make findings about the violation, and the business would have an opportunity to appeal. That's standard for any kind of licensing ordinance. It's just basic due process that you have to provide as part of licensing regulations. 1712, just, and also 1713 provide sanctions and penalties for businesses that violate any of the provisions we talked about tonight. It authorizes the city to suspend or revoke licenses for a number of different issues. So, you know, if they lie on the application, if they violate the ordinance or any other state law, if they are convicted of any crime that specifically relates to the massage business, so even more narrow, you would, all of those reasons and others, you would be able to revoke or suspend the license. And again, that would be a council, council process where you provide them notice and opportunity to be heard before the council. And that's really it. There's no public hearing required for this, there's no second reading. The council can choose to adopt the ordinance tonight, can modify the ordinance if you had specific changes like the 60 days.
And then removing the back taxes.
Right.
Specifically stating, removing the city.
Right, yeah, I think what I heard earlier is that the council wanted to, one, change the deadline for current businesses to apply to 60 days from the effective date of the ordinance. And then, two, change the provision in 17.08A to refer to any delinquent taxes and not just city taxes.
Correct.
And so, again, three options would be approve the ordinance as presented in the packet, two, make a motion to approve the ordinance with those two changes or any others, or three, you could table this for a different council meeting and deal with it later.
I think we should make a motion for option two with the amended changes.
Did you make it?
I'm making that motion.
Okay.
I will second.
Motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you for that, and actually just was going to say this before, I did have a conversation with somebody who has been a licensed massage therapist within our community for quite a while, and they did not see any concerns with following. I wanted to also make sure that this wasn't an onerous ordinance on those who are already following the law, and so not making any general assumptions for others. So, that license requirement passes, so as of tonight, businesses have 60 days to apply for and receive a license, and I know this does put extra work on our city staff to process those handful and walk through this process. So, we appreciate all of them and the work they'll be doing in the meantime.
Do we need to have another meeting, at least to talk about the fee and the forms?
Yeah.
In case someone comes in tomorrow and wants to apply for, I don't, I'm sure we have to, we have to publicate this.
Yes, that is, yeah, so the publication is the next item.
Okay.
And yes, I would suggest if staff is able to kind of collect an idea of what those fees will be, not putting Scott on the spot right now because we don't know, you know, how much that background check will...
Yep.
...cost for both state and federal background checks for any of the other work, and we need to also think of staff time to create, you know, the cost of creating that, all of those things, those are fees that, those are costs we want to...
Include in the fee.
Make sure covered.
Make sure covered.
I guess my thought is, I'm just thinking out loud, do we, I mean, do we allow ourselves a month to get the forms, the laminating machine, the figure out the fees and all that?
Won't be that long.
I mean, yeah, but how many meetings do we have? I mean, we need to approve this.
We just approved it.
Well, yeah, but...
So now we just need to approve the publication, which will give those guys time to figure out the fees.
Yep.
And if we can use the application, maybe start with the application.
We can get forms for an application tomorrow.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not...
Okay. And I'm just making sure you guys are...
Yeah, so there's the piece on applications and getting that together. On our side of things, all you'll need to do is adopt, we can put together a fee resolution, amending the fee schedule, which actually, I mean, is something that staff has probably already has a template for because I know you've amended fee schedules mid-year, so those, at least that part is very simple. And then, as I kind of got to earlier, the, I would just suggest looking at different cities, what they charge for these kind of licenses and then, you know, ask them for their forms.
Something in government that'll move quickly.
Yep.
Yeah, they, you know, cities are usually willing to share these forms and then, you know, they're often, you can just find them online too.
Great, okay. As long as our staff is comfortable.
All right, so the next item.
So, next item is discussion impossible approval. Yeah, we will do this. So, I will make the motion approving resolution 2025-39, authorizing summary publication of ordinance 2025-02.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, motion and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And next item, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Sam.
Your detail in walking through that. Next item is discussion impossible approval of a bid to repair the roof at 10 Maple Avenue South, which happens to be right above our heads because it is City Hall's roof that we had talked about a while ago and put it off, and guess what, it's leaking. So...
If you want us here, break room.
Yeah, roof needs to be replaced. Does have a sag in the middle, so water isn't getting to the drains. Instead of going to the drains, it runs out in the break room above the computer server.
Not a good place.
Yep. So, we had...
Want to look inside there? We got...
No.
Pretty fancy setup to keep water from...
Five-gallon buckets?
That's why we got you.
We got a primer attached to seal it.
Do you?
Very elaborate.
We need to...
Because it did damage our server.
Yep, that's, water and servers don't mix.
No, they don't, for some reason. So, there are two options here. One is and full replacement, and one was for full replacement with a ballasted membrane switch. Can you explain, because I was trying to read through each and figure out what was the difference?
Membrane replacement would be just peel the, take the rock off, peel the rubber off, put new rubber on. We need the full replacement because of the sag, they'll readjust that so there's pitch going to the drains on the roof.
And it's just one bid from one company?
There's two bids here.
Is there two?
Two.
Oh, I thought it was the same, okay.
Oh, there's B&amp;B and Out of Buffalo.
We requested bids from three different places.
Okay, I missed it.
You got two.
Well, I can't even look, so...
So, your recommendation is for, sorry, pardon my scrolling.
Hey, it's your computer, I just, my internet's off again.
Correct. Or for, okay.
For the full replacement.
That was for the lower, that was the lower bid?
That was the low bid, and they were also the most responsive as far as getting back to us on...
Oh, good.
And that's $38,800 versus the other bid was 46 or something like that.
Yeah, 46 or 48.
I missed that first one, that's why.
46,080. Well, roofs are never fun things to do or pay for, but they are a necessity. So, are we looking for a motion to approve the bid? I will make a motion to approve the bid from Four Seasons Roofing LLC for the full replacement of the roof at $38,800.
Second, motion and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. When do they start?
Hopefully soon.
Before the next rains.
Before Saturday?
Yeah. Sounds like they should still be able to get it on the schedule before...
That's good. Thank you for that. And discussion and possible approval of retro pay. There was a memo for that.
So, as was discussed at the Personnel Committee, ABDO came back with a list for current employees and have met with each of the employees, except Al, who's been on vacation, I guess, and Bill, to summarize that, and they made some adjustments, but for, for seven employees, we're requesting retro in the amount of $26,166.65. And I would note that they're now working on prior employees that may be owed as well.
So, and this was information that was presented to the council at our Personnel Meeting, in the open part of our Personnel Meeting, and I want to say thank you to Scott for the work that he did, first, for identifying that there was an issue and doing the legwork to work it back. Did employ ABDO's assistance to validate and to go back and kind of double-check all of that work, and we're doing the right thing by making sure that our employees are paid properly and paid what they had been owed in the past, so making you guys whole, so appreciate all of you. I know I'm just speaking to you, but you representing all of our staff who was impacted by the errors that were made in the past, so thankful to see that those have been tracked down, and I know it was many, 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 many hours of frustrating math that was taken.
I'm glad ABDO got it and finished it up and got it all done.
Get there.
It's been a long time coming. Can I just ask one question about this? Because I did listen, I, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, I had surgery and I was out, but when I was listening to it, I wasn't quite sure, so it says they'll get their, that lump sum, they'll take out taxes along with their, their mandatory para that will go into their retirement, so does that also include the city's, I don't know what they match at, will that also include the city's responsibility for the para or no?
Correct, anything that's mandatory for para would be included.
So, both the employee and, okay, I'll make sure that was...
I know the rough number you threw out was 30 that night, and we're at 26, so...
And Andrew's got fixed because yours wasn't right when I listened to the meeting.
There was nothing that was right.
No, no.
No, it was, no, that spreadsheet was, for the most part, that spreadsheet was pretty spot-on, I think there was just some question...
No, I'm just saying Al, everything Al brought.
They forgot, yeah.
I feel really bad for Al. I feel really bad for Al. And I listened to that...
It was like 3 cents, right? I don't know.
And then to be treated the way...
Patient man.
No, and then to be treated poorly, I didn't care for that. So, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve the retro pay for the employees listed here. Do you need any more than that?
In the amount of $26,166.65.
In the amount of $26,166.65.
I'll second that.
To right the wrong of the past.
Motion and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes, so thank you. The next item is discussion and possible approval of city administrator yearly review and wage increase. In our closed session of our Personnel Committee meeting, we did discuss our city administrators' performance and shared appreciation, and, you know, the notes that we've had in the past of conversations in the past have been corrected, so it was after that meeting that we did recommend a couple of things. One was, and these were recommended to the council from that closed Personnel Meeting, one was the COLA retro back to his six-month review, which was in January, that was because of that, the way that conversation went, that was missed, and that was on us as a council for missing that. So, a COLA retro to the six-month, excuse me, and in reviewing the, there were a couple recommendations that were put out, and the one that was approved to bring to council was the approval of looking at the wage study results and bringing the wage of our administrator in line with the, the wage study amounts, and so that would be 55.17 an hour was the motion that was passed.
You passed a motion, did you?
It was passed as a motion to recommend it to council. So, this is the, I am bringing forward the recommendation that was made to council. So, first of all, the COLA retro to six-month, the increase in salary to bring in line with the other salaries in the study, and then the third piece was the 2026 COLA when that gets approved in January.
What is the COLA percentage from January?
It's typically 2.5 to 2.75.
It's, this last year was 1.25. It goes with the, it goes with the Social Security.
Yeah.
All right. And that was what everybody got, for anybody that got COLA, it was 1.25%, correct?
Yeah.
And can I just clarify, are COLAs automatically guaranteed by, and that's an honest question, I'm just asking that, because I've worked where our companies were at a point where they weren't given cost of living raises, so I just wanted to clarify, is a COLA mandatory or is it...
We make the decision.
So, so it's, I just wanted to know if it was a mandatory.
Step plus COLA, I think is...
I would say it is not ever, no raise is ever mandatory.
That's all I wanted to ask.
However, it has been the practice of this city for many years that at a minimum, everybody receives a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, and then whether their managers...
I truly just wanted to ask if it was mandatory or if it was still at the, at the council's judgment. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, yes. So, it was 1.75, you said?
1.25.
1.25.
I did some checking this week after that meeting. You know, like, I run heavy equipment, a big backhoe, you know what they're making now an hour? That's not even including their insurance, which is above, and your pension, they're making 70 bucks an hour on their check.
I'm in the wrong business.
And the linemen, your linemen, yeah, I know.
Well, that's the choice...
Don't give him any ideas.
Like the lineman, your Xcel Energy lineman, not the bosses, the linemen, they're making 70 bucks an hour.
How much you think the guys get paid to dig your ditches for MP? Big bucks?
I know what they make.
Big bucks.
So, it's, you know...
It's backbreaking labor, who wants to do it?
I would like to make the motion to approve, do I need to name all this, the, what was approved to us?
Well, COLA retro to six months for...
For 25.
For 25, 55.17.
And 55.17 hourly wage. With, what's that?
The 2026 COLA, whatever that is.
COLA as well. I would like to make that motion.
We have motion.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion?
I, I want to, I know I wasn't here and I missed my opportunity to discuss, and I won't be too detailed, and I don't...
And we do need to be cautious because that was a closed session in Personnel.
Exactly, I understand that. And I don't mean to put it out, my only, my only concern is the fact of a lot of this is based on hourly wage and... this is based on hourly wage, and I know that I had received a note stating when somebody works or when they don't work. However, we don't know, and so I'm a little bit, the numbers to me are a little bit skewed when you talk about a 40-hour work week versus a 50 versus a 30. It's really hard, it still goes back from when we first talked about it in an open meeting, that it's really hard for me to understand how someone can be in one location and say they're at one location for 40 hours and 25 at one and 10 at another during the same work hours. And so that's my only concern, and that was all discussed in open, so I just wanted to reiterate that, and I can be done. That's all I wanted to say.
I have never said I'm at one and then another and then another.
Okay, and I'm going to stop-
I just wanted to say that, because it was all open meeting, and I wanted just to reiterate that.
You've stated, so let me clarify that the, and this is a good clarification to make, that this is not just an hourly wage. This is, so the, it is the salary equivalent, so it is a salaried amount and not an hourly amount. So just to clarify that, that it is a salaried amount in the, that equiv, is equivalent to 55.17 an hour for 2,080 hours a year.
Right, and I, and I won't, without saying anything about the Personnel Meeting, because it was closed, I only brought that up because there was discussion that you stated about hourly rates, nothing about his job or anything like that, but you brought it up, so.
Correct, yes, thank you for saying that, so we could clarify that it is not truly an hourly wage.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing I'd just like to point out, is there any reason why this is one motion and not two? I was, I thought we made a motion during that meeting for the COLA increase, and then we made a motion that was for the 55.17. There was two motions made-
Step increase or something.
Yes, there was two motions made that night, so I'm just wondering, are we gonna bundle them together, or are we gonna do them separately?
I did, just bundle them.
Okay, he bundled, okay, perfect.
So that is the motion on the table, I guess.
All right, excellent.
And it's been seconded.
Yep, so we have a motion, second, all in favor, aye opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
And that does pass. All right, that brings us to the end of our lovely meeting this evening. Nothing else here other than announcements and dates to remember. Chamber of Commerce meets Wednesday, August 6th at noon at Madigan's. Our Park Board meets Monday, August 11th at 5:00 PM, and right after that meeting at 6:00 PM is our pickleball court dedication. We've seen quite a few people out there playing.
They're up there.
There was a nun.
I heard about the nun.
We got a nun back in town, sweet.
You should have seen, I bet you there was 40 people there last night.
Last night, it was crazy.
They were just crazy, and it was, they were on the picnic tables and all over, sitting there watching.
I don't know, maybe another two courts got to go in.
Can you specify where the Park Board meeting's gonna be?
Yep, so the, both the Park Board and the pickleball court dedication, they're going to be at our city park. The dedicate, court dedication is at 6:00 PM, the meeting is at 5:00. Planning Commission meets Tuesday, August 12th at 6:00 PM. Just a quick shameless plug, for WCCA has their 60th anniversary event that evening as well on our city lot. That's Wright County Community Action, open to everybody. Gearhead Get Together, there's kind of a thing that's happening, yeah. That will take over our entire town on Saturday, August 16th, and our next City Council meeting is Tuesday, August 19th at 6:00 PM.
My favorite day.
And with that, I seek a motion.
Can I just ask one other question? Because originally, I swear, it's not a hard one. Originally, I thought I had a memo that the Park Board meeting was gonna be at the other park. Did we move it?
It was, it was going to be, and then we added the pickleball dedication, so just to see if you-
I just wanted to make sure, yeah.
That sounds good to me.
So with that-
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, everybody's second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You get to hang out. All right. Thank you, everybody, for sticking with us this evening. We really appreciate it. Stay safe. Take care.